This is Open Parley Live.
Hello and welcome to Open Parley Live here on Open Council. My name is Lynette Manzini. Thank you very much for joining us today. In today's conversation, we want to talk about privatization of water in Harare. Is this a good move? And helping us to discuss this topic today is the National Coordinator from the Community Water Alliance, Hadlai Muzingwa. Welcome to the program.
Thank you, Lyn.
Before we get into today's issue, just give us a brief situational analysis of the state of water supply in Harare.
Thanks very much, Lyn. I think currently, I will start with the design capacity of the two water treatment plants that we have in Harare. We have Modern Jeffrey and Prince Edward Water Treatment Plant. If they are operating at full throttle, they can produce 704 megaliters per day. So that's their capacity, design capacity. And the city is not making use of the full capacity. So the city is producing 390. Sometimes it goes down to even 200 megaliters per day. So that's the production that the city is focusing on. And for everyone to have water in the tap, we need 1,200 megaliters per day. I think it's important also that I highlight that the city supplies water to Noto, municipality Chitungwiza, Apueth, Roa, and all the surrounding urban, you know, peri-urban settlements around Harare. So that's the current situation. The reason why the city cannot make use of the full design capacity is because of the raw water quality in the city, which requires a lot of chemicals. And sometimes they are forced to wait for the rains to dilute the water in the lake so that they can abstract better quality raw water before purification and distribution to residents. So the city is upstream of its water source. So all the pollution that happens upstream finds its way downstream. So that's why the city is not making use of the design capacity, full design capacity. I think if you rewind a bit, you realize that there were discussions with the government to take water from Dowindale Dam, which was better in terms of quality. But with the operations of the Chinese in Noto, tiles production that is also polluted down the dam. And the quality is just as bad as what is in lecture.
As you're speaking, I'm thinking of the Environmental Management Agency. Is this where, don't they come in here to try to make sure that, you know, that tile production doesn't affect water?
It does, but I think it's important that I highlight to you that we have what is called the polluter pay principle, that the person who pollutes pay the fine. The fine is not deterrent enough to prevent pollution. So it's cheaper to pollute and pay a fine than to put mechanisms at a company to prevent pollution.
At the expense of the residents who have no water? Because I'm one of those residents. I have to get a bucket in the morning, go and look for a well outside to get water when others are just paying a penalty and walking squat free.
These are private institutions. That's privatization for you. They look at maximization of profit. So if it is profitable to pollute and pay the fine than to prevent, it is more costly to prevent the pollution. They would rather opt for, you know, minimum cost and you make a killing in terms of profits.
Let's get into the main argument today. So there has been a proposal, and I think it's already in motion, to privatize water supply in Harare. I know that your organization is opposing this. Bring us up to speed. Why are you opposing this move?
Okay, there are several reasons, Lyn. I think the first one is looking at the law. We are not talking about the constitution. Everyone now understands the human right to water provisions in the constitution. But let's look at the law.
But let's not assume maybe we have, we might have viewers who don't even know that it's in the constitution.
So I think section 77A of the constitution now says it is a right. Everyone is a right to water. And that means in terms of the legal content of that right, you are supposed to have water 24/7, which is availability. It has to be available 24/7. That means 24 hours per day for seven days of the week. Number two, affordability. Water has to be affordable in terms of its price. And I will speak much about the current tariffs that we have in Harare later on. But you know that also I will make a distinction between water privatization and water commercialization. Okay. And besides affordability, we look at what is called physical accessibility distance. You don't need to travel more than one kilometer to access water for your right to have been upheld. The last one is around, the last two is around quality. Quality of water, it needs to be, you know, up to standard, which doesn't cause diseases. And we also look at acceptability. The tested order of water has to be acceptable. And then the last one is around the time. If you are looking for water through other alternative ways, you don't need to spend more than 30 minutes before you have the water. So those are the components that encompass the legal content of the human right to water. Now coming back to why we are opposing. The police, city of Harare, has no authority to do what they are doing at the moment. That's the first starting point from a legal position. So we have the 2013 National Water Police that was developed during the era of the inclusive government when the late Honorable Mr. Panguomo was the Minister of Water Resources. So under paragraph one, sub-paragraph three, two of that police, they have made a distinction between what they call a water service authority and a water service provider. Okay. So they now say all local authorities are now water service authorizers or a water service authority. Who can be given power and authority to have contractual agreements with what they call water service provider? That means the provision is no longer resting with the local authority. Okay. So that's the genesis of privatization. And that's where we have also a reason why we are not agreeing to, that I will explain. So for that to happen now, the water service authority, in this case, which is city of Harare, should have the power and authority through an amendment to the Urban Council Act. And that process has not happened.
Since 2013.
Since 2013. I think you know that after the inclusive government, we had the new constitution. And part of what we have not done in terms of the legal architecture of the nation is reviewing all acts of parliament in line with the constitution. And we still have the Urban Council Act as it is. So the city at the moment is not a water service authority. Right? So they cannot, it's specific if you go to paragraph one, sub-paragraph three, three of that National Water Police. It's very specific that this power and authority is subject to review of the law, which is the Urban Council Act. That has not happened. But what are we witnessing? The city is busy assuming the power and authority that they don't have. That's one of the challenges. Number two, we don't have a full council resolution. You know the process of council. Any police position of council goes to the relevant committee. In this matter, the environment committee. It is then brought as a recommendation to full council for adoption, and it becomes a police position of council. The challenge we have with the mayor is that he operates unilateral. He gives himself power that he doesn't have, making unilateral decisions, and later on, you know, engage Ministry of Local Government and engage in illegal things that are not, you know, confined to the law. So we are not agreeing to privatization on that basis.
So you're saying that other councillors are not in agreement with this position?
If they are in agreement, let me bring it.
There is no resolution.
You see.
You haven't seen it, obviously.
I have asked, I've not only seen it, I have asked whether there is a resolution on the engagement of Hellkro Electrical, which is now subcontracting Lison Technologies, which is the second reason why we are not agreeing. The second reason is if you are saying, okay, assuming that the law has been amended, right? Our thinking is that if you say Lyn is the one that can provide water as a water service provider, right? Engage that person directly or that institution or company. But what do we have? The city enters into an agreement with Hellkro Technologies, Hellkro Electrical, which is a local company. The company enters into an agreement with a Chinese firm, Lison Technologies.
They have subcontracted, which means it's going to be expensive for the consumer.
You see, is this Hellkro a show of combat? That's the first question that you ask yourself. And these arrangements are bearing in terms of the cost of water. Remember when we were starting, I said I want to make a distinction between water privatization and water commercialization. Commercialization of water is providing water at a profit. Already there's commercialization of water in Harare, do you know?
Yes.
Yes. Because water in terms of the cost of production, it costs 70 cents to produce one cubic meter of water in the city. And the city is, if you look at the tariff, which were approved by government, which I have here. If you are consuming less than five cubic meters, the price is dollar 70 cents. So there is more than 100% for a low-density sebap profit. If you are consuming more than five cubic meters, the price is $2.31. So our private, commercialization, so for low-density sebaps, I have talked about the figures. For high density, which are our, you know, low-income communities.
Yes.
The price of water, if you are producing it below five cubic meters, it's dollar 24 cents. If you are above five cubic meters, it's $2. Okay, five cubic meters is 5,000. So if you are consuming per month less than 5,000, there is a charge. You see, if it is more than.
It's $2.
You see. So there is already commercialization of water. The city is operating at a profit when it comes to delivery of water. That's commercialization.
So in the low-density for the first 5,000, below 5,000, there, you said it's 1.24, which means there are any about.
Dollar 24 cents.
Yes, about 54 cents.
Yes.
Yes.
As a profit, yes, right? If they are, you know, consuming more than five cubic meters, it's $2. And you can go to bills for the local authority. I have not seen anyone who's said to be consuming less than five. So work on the basis of.
$2.
$2. That's the reality on the ground. Even where there are estimates, and even where there is no meter, you can go and look at the papers. So there's commercialization of water already in the city. Privatization is subcontract, so, sorry. Commercialization can even happen even if it is a public entity as long as they are providing water at a profit. That's commercialization. Privatization now is contracting a private player, a private company, to deliver water to residents. That's where we have privatization. So that one, it comes with its own challenges. The first one I have alluded to. The second one, access to information. To hold anyone accountable, Lyn. Even to make use effectively of section 62 of the constitution on access to information, it has to be a public entity. That's why the right is subjected to, you know, in as far as you, it's for purposes of public accountability, public accountability, not private accountability. You can't go to Delta right now and ask them.
About their operating costs.
You see, you will not get them. They are protected by the law. So you know what happened at City Park. The reason why the documents could not be accessed, it's around privatization. So you'd find that there is this misconception that private players are accountable. We don't have access to their documents. It's not that they are super, you know, human in terms of accountability. You don't have, as long as you don't have information, you can't hold anyone accountable.
So you have been doing a lot of work with other, you know, organizations that work in the wash area, and you are able to scrutinize some of these issues because you've got access to this information. But you're saying with this proposed privatization, it's going to be very difficult for you to get this information because no private player is going to open their door. But for the public entities, they are compelled by the law, and they have to publicize this. I just want to pick your brain in regards to pricing. Right now, you have details around water costing $70, 70 cents to produce and how their profits are looking. With the private players, are they, is council able to control them or to give them a ceiling, a ceiling price of charging water? Or it's within their own?
Obviously, it will be within their own. But there is now a provision in the Water Police, which talks about a creation of what they call the regulator under the ministry responsible for water delivery. And this case is the Minister of Land. Okay. So the regulator, its purpose is for those private institutions to submit their proposed tariffs on water. And then they will then help and say, no, this one, you are going too much. This one, you are not going too much. But even if you have a regulator, the other challenge, Lyn, assuming on your own company, I have talked about tariffs in a low-density and tariffs in a high-density. Which one would you prioritize in terms of water delivery? One who is giving you water at $3 or $2.34, and the other one at $24. If a private player, where are your priorities going to go?
More money.
More money. You see. So the profit motive is what drives privatization of water delivery. So that's the other reason, which will then embark affordability of water services for citizens. That is part of the reason why we are saying we are not agree. And on top of that, a private player will come with, you can go into okay, take a loaf of bread, and say, I'll pay later. A private player comes with prepayment.
But are we not already doing that with electricity, and it's going very well?
Now I want to make a distinction now between what's the difference between electricity and our case when it comes to water? Number one, the meter for electricity is different from a prepaid water meter. A prepaid water meter can last at most six years. Okay? The cost of installation of a prepaid water meter is at least, the least that we can get, is $164, one meter.
I'm already thinking how much civil servants earn, but go ahead.
You see. So if it is dollar something in terms of the cost of installation, look at the revenue streams that can come at household level. The timeframe, like, or the lifespan is six years. So you define that at the time when we are recouping on the cost of installation only for the meter, it would have outlived, it's stay. You need a new one, right? So you need another $164. And multiply that, Lyn.
By the number of households.
Even by the number of meters that the city have said they want to install. 650,000, you get 107 million US. It is Zigananda at play in terms of the tender preneuers. And you know the context of our nation. Do you think you will get the least in terms of price? You will get your 300 per meter, which will then transfer to 214 million.
And the cheapest always.
The cost of installation alone. We are talking about not purification of water, cost of installing the meter alone. The beneficiary will smile all the way to the bank as Zigananda. In this war matrix, it has nothing to do with water delivery. But tender preneuers who are going to install those meters, and also private players, who want to have you, you know, prepaid, whether you will get the water or not. So the first issue with us is on a cost and benefit analysis. You see? At the expire of the meter at six years, that means you need another 107 million to also install a new one. So it doesn't make business sense. The second issue, there's a pilot that was done, Lyn.
In Sunningdale.
In Sunningdale, in Kambuzuma, and in the avenues. Go and check whether the prepaid water meters worked. Remember, there is a research that was done by G.I. Zek, which concluded that the organizational and technical prerequisites required for a prepayment water system to work in Zimbabwe is not yet there. And the results of that pilot have shown. I traveled to Kambuzuma.
So instead of the city council to look at how they can, you know, equip themselves and capacitate themselves to be ready to run such, you know, the prepaid water system, they're ignoring the research and still want to go ahead with privatization.
Yes. And that's why I'm saying their agenda is not about water delivery. If it was about water delivery, there are issues that we present to the local authority that they should have focused on. Number one, do you need, remember, we have physical losses on water. 35% of water that is being lost, produced is lost through physical losses, best pipes.
Yes.
Do you rush to put a meter at the end of the pipe? Or you fix the distribution system? Look at the priorities of the city. They want to fix a meter at the end, not the distribution. They're not concerned about what they have produced, whether it is reaching the intended beneficiaries. That's where we have a problem with, you know, the local authority in terms of their prepayment system, proposed prepayment system on water.
And I hear your argument very valid because it makes no sense. You just want to make more money by collecting, first of all, the hardware, but then the pipes. Areas like Avandale and Mbare have the oldest pipes in the city, and there are leaks almost every day. But, you know, those are not being fixed, yes. But I want us to compare with South Africa. South Africa took the privatization route. And with the articles I've been reading, you know, revenue collection has been easier, has been very efficient. Right now, the city council is struggling in terms of collecting water. And then the issue around the water supplies themselves in South Africa, it has also improved, and the quality has improved. Don't you think that while it's expensive, I hear your expense argument, there's also an issue of your water quality, the supply, and also revenue collection?
Okay, on the quality, let me start on the quality. I have talked why we have challenges around quality.
Yes.
The side of the city.
Yes.
A prepaid water meter will not address pollution of the lake.
What about privatization? Bringing in a private player? Because you're saying, because you initially said council, the cities are able to use the design capacity because there's too much to purify. They need too much chemicals. Maybe as a private player, they are able to source cheaper chemicals?
No, no, they are not because of two reasons. But I'll come to that. Okay, let me start addressing that. Remember, there's a directive when it comes to pages of water treatment chemicals. Chemplex, it's a directive from government. You know who owns Chemplex? The city was prohibited. Do you think you ever have a private player that will skip that directive?
No.
No. So don't think there will be any changes around that. But I want to speak to the issue that you've talked about around South Africa. Last time, we were told by the city that there is a symbol of that model in Ettequin. And by the grace of God, the CEO of Ettequin came to the city, and I was present myself, and I asked him a question around this whole model that the city was presenting. And openly, and it's on public record, he said, we don't have such a system. But the city had said, Ettequin in South Africa, you know, I will look for the conduct and give you the conduct person. The CEO, he's a Zimbabwean. I hope he's still at Ettequin Municipality. He's a Zimbabwean, the guy. And the picture were given is that, you know, there is a prepayment system that is already working there. He said, no, we don't have such a system. At council, the meeting was held at council. He was invited by city of Harare. This is on public record. It's not something that we can. So some of the things that are being talked about, Lyn, they are not there.
They're not truthful.
It's not true.
And what about in terms of revenue collection? Don't you think that's going to, that would improve? Because council seems to be doing a very bad job in terms of collecting revenue.
But why? Why are they not collecting? Go to what came from the Commission of Inquiry. They disregarded BIQ, which they were using, and reverted it to ERIP. And we had challenges where the city was actually supplying. It's about billing. Do you think they don't have capacity?
They seem to have a lot of workers.
BIQ was performing better. This is on public record, even from the mayor himself with the Commission of Inquiry. Why did they remove that? To focus on a system where people are using flash to go to a district, take a document on Excel, and then bring it to, it's deliberate.
We are running out of time, but I want you to talk to us about your position as Community Water Alliance. Have you approached the local authorities? Have you approached council and spoken to them about your grievances regarding privatization of water in Harare? Because you seem to say it's a bad idea.
Yes, we have written to the local authority. Unfortunately, you know, Mayor Jacob Mafume is in his own style of leadership from the previous mayors. He is the only mayor that I would say openly, he is dragging the local authority into mad smiling. He has completely closed citizen engagement and stakeholder engagement, which is a police position of council. Look at the previous mayors, they were open. Mafume, it's not only for us, even for councillors. He comes with his own position in council and embosks his own positions, even without voting, you know, subjecting to vote, go and watch full council meetings. So that avenue.
So the councillors, we think, are representing us, have no say in council?
You can call. We called at one point to ask the town clerk, ask Stanley Gama on particular police position. You are told it's only the mayor. Why should the police position of institution reside with the person? If it is a police position.
That's a dictatorship.
You see, it should be articulated by anyone, including him, Stanley Gama, who is the, you know, public, you know, relations, not relations, the person who deals with.
Communication.
Communication of the council. Call him on particular position, who will tell you, on this one, it's only the mayor who can speak around that. What kind of nonsense is that?
I hear you, and what can this?
But what we've done, I think I have highlighted, we have written to them, highlighting the provisions of what are the requirements for them to be a water service authority. If they are not, they should not purport to be one such. So we have made that position clear. If they continue, we know what we will do from our side as an institution, both in terms of what is provided for in the law to give reprieve to our residents. And the mayor has not only privatized water, he has done the same with, you know. Remember, for us, we don't look at water only, we say wash, water sanitation and hygiene. The hygiene component is solid waste in it. He has also privatized solid waste. One of a spectacular turn away from his particular previous position, where we were saying the Jopomona contract was crafted in hell. And all of a sudden, he is part of that hell. So this man, I am convinced that he now represents himself, himself, and himself alone when it comes to police position.
What can the residents do? What role can they play in all this? I know you are playing your part as the Community Water Alliance. You are raising this awareness as you're doing here on this program. You've engaged the local authorities. But do citizens just sit back and wait for you to do all the action? What can the citizens do? You've engaged the local authorities, but do citizens just sit back and wait for you to do all the action? What can the citizens do?
We'll be going within communities. We have started talking to them. A prepaid water meter cannot be forced on your household. Someone cannot just come to me and say I want to install through force E T C. So they still have a role. That's what I'm saying. But what is important is that they make this decision from an informed basis. And that is the reason why we are also going out to engage them. Remember, last time, it's not the first time that these issues were coming on board. That's the first one. Number two, they also have councillors as elected representatives. They can engage their local councillor.
But you said the councillors are not, um you know, they are not contributing to policy.
But but at least let's have positions as what is the current situation. Where the mayor unilaterally runs around uh with particular police posi- positions. That doesn't have a full council resolution. It's a better, even in the future, we can challenge those decisions. If there's at least normals in the local authority, which we expect it to, there there will be normals in the immediate future.
I hope in the next program, we're able to bring in the mayor to have this conversation and hear he said.
I I I hope so, because on capital, if I am present, I hope so. And I can challenge him openly. If he wants a public debate around this issue, I mean, I'm available.
Is that a challenge?
I I would, whether I would say a challenge, but it's a, it's an engagement for the benefit of informed decision making. For residents and policymakers. He has been skipping any debate that I am present. Because he, I think he knows that he doesn't have uh solid, uh you know, uh. Uh positions around why he's doing this.
On that note, unfortunately, we've run out of time, but many, there are more interesting issues that we need to talk about. Not interesting, but important issues because water is life and I'd like to thank you very much for joining us today.
Thanks for the time.
Uh there you have it, viewers. That was um uh Community Water Alliance National Coordinator Had Life Mudzengwandi was just talking to us about. The downside, you know, the disadvantages of privatization of water in Harare. He alludes to the fact that there is commercialization already, but now what council seeks to do is privatization. He says it's illegal because the law has not been aligned, the constitution has not been aligned. Um so the the can- council cannot go ahead and privatize water. And his concern as well is why are we looking at water meters? When the water infrastructure is dilapidated, you have broken pipes. Why isn't council looking at fixing those pipes instead of uh adding another cost. Um to the already struggling residents. Uh until next time, thank you very much for joining us. My name is Lynette Manzini. Goodbye.